Okay, we will wait a little bit.
Yeah.
If we get, see if we get any more attendance.
Anita reached out to me and she'll be here.
Oh, good.
And there's Chris O. Pat looks like she's trying to join again. Blue screen from Pat. Hey, you coming up to Belfast this weekend?
Me?
Yeah, my wife's playing, her band's playing at the All Roads Music Festival.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What's your band?
Thunderheart Lion.
Okay, I have a friend in the band formerly known as Rural Electric. What's their name now?
Is it Muskeg?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, my wife's, they're playing at one on Saturday on the main stage.
Yeah, Andrew's in that band and he's playing.
No, I know him.
Andrew Carpenter?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good dude.
And his brother Murray. Yeah, good.
Yeah.
For sure. He grew up out where I did, out in Ohio, northeast Ohio.
Where'd you grow up in northeast Ohio?
Chagrin Falls area.
Yeah, my dad is, uh, Shaker Heights.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and my mom, Ashland, Ohio.
Oh, I know both those places.
Yeah, and I went to the College of Worcester.
Oh, did you really?
Yeah, spent some time in the cornfields.
Wow, I know, my dad and his, and his wife lived down there, yeah, in Worcester, actually. I know Worcester quite well as well.
They say there's a reason why we do so well in school because there's nothing else to do.
It's cool.
Pat, you're on a blue screen. I'm not sure if that's intentional. It's a pretty colored blue. Anita, Chris O and Jeannie, I have no video. Oh, Pat just sent a note. She has something isn't right with their connection. She's gonna leave and rejoin.
Alright.
Okay.
I'm in the car, so I don't think you really want to see the roof of the car.
Well, depends, what kind of car is it?
Well, I guess you'd see the sky.
Nothing wrong with that.
I, I'm driving back from New Jersey and traffic didn't cooperate to get me where I thought I'd be by this time of the day.
Does it ever when you're driving back from Jersey?
Well, if you leave at four o'clock in the morning, yes.
Yeah, I get that. Done that many times.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Hi Anita, we can hear and see you.
Oh, aren't you lucky?
Pat's trying to join again.
I had to print this out so that I could, could review it, but it ended up being pretty tiny.
Yeah, I'm sitting here trying to zoom it in so I can read it.
I'm trying to, um, it kind of has to be this way, but.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
You can, yeah, you're back. I'm gonna try it at 400 and see how that plays. Oh, that's pretty big. I can read that.
Yeah, I bet.
About 125 will fill the page.
Nice, Jeannie, always there with the key info.
But I wanted to make notes on it as I reviewed it, so that's why I had to print it out.
Do we have anybody else here, Jeremy, today? Doesn't appear like we do. We thought we might have a couple of special guests, just so you all know. It looks like Jeremy just disappeared.
He probably went to do YouTube, but.
He, he already did that. We've been recording this whole time.
Oh.
He's back.
What about Mark?
He had a proposed guest speaker. Mark isn't going to make it. I haven't heard about Andy. Do you know about Andy, Jeremy?
Mark's signing in, isn't he? There he is, hi Mark.
Oh, he, oh, that's Mark Ratner, yeah, he's here, there you go. Welcome, Mark. Well, they were asking about Mark Segenthal, and he's not gonna make it, but it's good to see Mark Ratner here. Jeremy had a proposed possible speaker. But it doesn't seem like he's gonna make it.
I can touch on that, Ethan.
Sure.
Are we starting the meeting?
Pat can't hear yet.
Oh.
Did you see the message? She can't hear.
I saw the chat, yeah.
Don't start, don't start yet.
Looks like she's gonna try again. We'll wait.
Alright.
I'm gonna tell her she could join by phone.
Ethan, while we're waiting,
Sure.
I would like to officially, as a committee, wish Audra well as she gives birth to her son tomorrow.
Oh, excellent, and thank you. I would definitely second that.
We could do it as part of the meeting, or it's just a kind of a special, very special event for our town manager.
Of course it is, yeah. My dogs are just greeting Tristan as he's returning home, so maybe a little bit of strenuous noise.
Chris, are you still with us, right?
I'm here.
Alright. Are you at least moving down the road, or?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Rolling right along. It was just a delayed departure. But here on the Garden State Parkway.
I'm glad I'm not there.
It is green.
Hey, it's green here.
And not New Jersey.
And we're not in New Jersey.
Does anybody have Pat's phone?
I do. She did text me.
She could call in by phone. She can join the meeting by phone and still see it.
I will message that.
I did, but I don't know if she saw my message.
I think she's off, I think she's off.
Yeah, but I have her on, I have her on text, so I'll send her a text.
Okay.
It's saying my internet's unstable every now and again. I don't know why, but I'm on fiber, so.
Fiber, must be nice.
Yeah.
It is.
$65 a month.
Well, I pay about that for DSL, so.
I'm from one of the big boys, too.
Yeah, you're not, you're also not dealing with Consolidated Communication.
No, not at all.
Which is the only company I've ever actually known to get an F from the Better Bureau business, Better Business Bureau.
Seems like there should be a lot more Fs than.
Yeah, but it's pretty impressive to be like, wow, if all the other businesses are getting Cs and Bs, how bad do you have to be to get an F?
Be bad.
Yeah, so Pat just texted me. She's gonna try the phone after she restarts her computer if it doesn't work. I do, I do think it's, we're not in a huge, like, pressing time-wise here, so I think it's worth waiting for Pat, just to, because I wanna.
Especially since she made the effort to put all this together.
Oh, what a great job, and, 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 yeah, she did such a fantastic job, and always, of course, Jeannie, too, for her assistance with that.
Ethan, I will just let you know that our next two regularly scheduled meetings, the second and the 17th. I am not, I have a conflict on the second and I'll be out of the country.
So, we're gonna need to find someone else to make motions.
I'm, I'm giving you several weeks' advance notice.
Chris, are, are you open? Are you available on the alternate Thursdays instead? Or is it just those, that whole timeframe?
I'm, I'm not, I have a conflict on the second, and then I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be out of the country for the next 10 days. And so technically I wouldn't be available, but it'll be about midnight.
We could have it at midnight.
Yeah, you can.
Entertaining.
Pat, how are you doing? Can you hear? Can you talk?
I see Pat. Can you hear us? Nod, nod if you can hear us.
Blink twice if you.
We can hear Pat.
I can hear Pat, I think she's dialing in.
Pat, we can hear you. Yeah.
This has been a, we're having one of the Mercury Retrograde meetings.
First time ever, really, in two years.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
I'm letting her know that we can see and hear her dialing, just not to.
Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue. You are in the meeting now. There are seven participants in the meeting. You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six. You have been added to the waiting room. You cannot talk. You are unmuted.
Okay, we've got feedback. Here we go.
Pat, can you hang up?
I'm gonna, no, I think she just needs to mute her computer.
There you go.
There we go. Hi, Pat!
I, I don't think so.
Can you hear us, Pat?
Doesn't look like it.
No, it sure doesn't. She's just in a chat. She's gonna try again.
Where, where are you going, Ethan?
I, I am trying to get her to, um, mute her computer.
Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
Yeah, she's muted her phone. I may not let her in, because it will feedback again.
Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press, you are in the meeting now. There are seven participants in the meeting. You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six. You have been added to the waiting room. You cannot talk or listen until the host admits you to the meeting.
Hey, I'm gonna try this again. I may remove her.
I sent her a text. Pat, can you hear us? She's like, where is that music coming from? Pat, can you hear us?
I guess not.
No.
Huh. Maybe that's the muting the computer part.
Right.
She's not speaking into the.
Pat, can you try to, she can't even hear us, can she?
It doesn't seem like it.
Did you let her in, Jeremy?
I don't want to let her in.
Yeah, I think, I think she, she must have got my message. You should try letting her in.
Alright.
She just muted her computer, she says.
There I go. I may remove her depending.
Okay, she's muted on the phone.
Hi, Pat!
Nope, see, her phone's muted.
You can unmute your phone. Just leave your computer muted. Oh, she doesn't hear me, or does she? Welcome to Maine where your, whether your interweb connection is.
I believe she has to hit star six to unmute her phone.
Okay, did you hear that? Star six will unmute your phone.
Alright, I think I just.
Hey, there we are!
Sorry about that. I think it's because I got another monitor, finally, that might be messing things up. So, I don't know, but, um.
One way or the other, we're, we're happy that you were able to join us.
Finally, yeah, sorry about that.
No problem. Okay, so we will go ahead and get started.
Good wishes for Audra first.
Yep, so as Anita has indicated, I will actually allow her the floor to make her unofficial motion, or official, as it were.
The planning board would like to wish Audra Taylor well as she births her son tomorrow.
Seconded.
All in favor.
We wish her well. Good luck, Audra, and we're proud of you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, so that takes us then to the agenda itself. This was the beginning of it, public comments on non-agenda items. Jeremy, have you got anything on public comments?
No, I thought I was going to, but I've got none. I was gonna have, I, I think you remember, maybe I'll just touch on it, a gentleman who's from Camden area, Justin Ford. He's a life safety expert, fire, life safety guy who worked for a firm called Breezeway. And what they do is they do short-term rental, say, they, kind of like a safety inspection programs across the country, much larger community, much larger cities, to be honest. And he's willing to, I chatted with him this afternoon, he's willing to talk with us. He does, his daughter does live in Camden, I think goes to Camden Hills High School, so he's willing to work with us if we'd like. He's willing to come and chat. Most of it is about, you know, life safety issues that inevitably happen, issues happen at short-term rentals, and what they're out is to try to minimize the risk for the homeowners and people that, transient visitors and guests that come to stay at short-term rentals, and that's what they do. He's willing to talk with us. Again, they have a certification program that they work with in a lot of cities. They certify buildings are safe, in essence, when they do the inspection. And he's willing to talk with us. I, I felt like kind of moving through what, where we are right now with what Kenny Bunkford and Cape is doing, and Bar Harbor, and what other communities are doing, and kind of see what path we'd like to go, but I would like to have him come back if you're willing to have him chat for half hour or so. He's willing to do it. It sounded like he's also willing to try to get his firm to do a pilot, kind of a pilot, one-year pilot or two-year pilot program for the town, just to see how it works, and I think he's doing it because he's from the area. He grew up here, so.
I think he used to own On the Water in Maine.
Correct, On the Water, Maine accommodations.
Uh huh, that's interesting, yeah.
But he does this, he's based out of Freeport now, and Breezeway's based out of Boston. He gives these kind of presentations all over the country, all over the world, really. And they've honestly been super swamped because this is a big issue all over, and I think he's willing to try to work with Camden, because this is where his roots are. We can do that if you'd like. I can bring him in, and next time maybe, and just have a little presentation. And again, it may, we can try to fit it in a convenient time for Chris O, depending on his schedule. We don't have to stay with our first and third. I don't have any planning board applications or projects in the works, so we can kind of think of that.
Yeah, and, and I mean, we have talked about, we did identify, obviously, safety as one of the key elements that we would be a reason to regulate.
Yeah.
And, you know, of course, that begs the question of how, how we do the inspections. I don't think in Camden it would be a full-time hire, but I also don't know that the code enforcement officer is gonna be able to fit that in with his work. And so, yeah, it certainly would be interesting to hear, even if it's a sales pitch, his take on what's required, what should be required, what, what the issues he sees, and, and then also entertain, I think, whether to hire or not is a, is a discussion that does not go to the planning board. That would be a select board decision, obviously, as far as funding. I saw your hand, Anita, so I'm gonna zip and let you go.
Okay, um, in looking over this chart that Pat put together for us.
Yeah, can we just stop for a second and say, thank you so much, Pat, for the effort that went into this, and how helpful it is?
Very helpful.
Really appreciate it, and, and Jeannie also for your tweaks.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sorry, Anita.
My, my sense was that there are a number of things covered here that are like, of course, we want to do that. And there are a few other things that vary from community to community, which would be items of discussion. So, in thinking about how we want to approach this, like, I, I, you know, from what you were just talking about, Ethan and Jeremy, I don't feel like I need a safety guy to come and tell us why we want to have short-term rentals be safe for renters. I think that's a kind of a slam dunk. And in looking at Cape Elizabeth, or, you know, I mean, I think we can go through those things that they're looking for, that they asked for, and just say, just vote on them. Yes, 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 we want that, we want that. It's, it just really, to me, is very obvious. The things that, then I marked things that I think we would want to discuss that would, you know, where we really need the time investment. Again, going back to this previous question, do we need the time investment to have someone tell us we need to make it safe for renters? I don't think we need to have someone come in and tell us that, because I think we know that. I propose that we know that. So, that might be a waste of our time, and what we really want to do is refine where, you know, what we like that are more variable between communities. Discuss, like, we've got rentals per year are different, rentals per seven days are different, things like that, that, that we'd sort of go through those tougher questions and figure out what we want to do there. And I think.
Right, so Anita, if I'm, if I'm taking your meaning, you're, you're not questioning whether we need a safety review. You're just questioning, you're saying that we don't really need that pitch that could be made to the select board or something like that. Is that, is that sort of a summary?
I, I think, I suspect that all of us might agree that we want to have a safety inspection done, we want to have, you know, just ask the easy questions first and see if we all agree.
Basically, if I.
Jump in, Chris O.
I, I don't disagree with you, Anita. I think we all, like, the safety factors, we, we would, we will all agree, like, certain things. I think what will be helpful to have someone who's been doing this is to give input on the metrics of measuring safety and the enforcement and inspection piece of it, because we can come up with a lot of these ideas, but how other communities are actually saying, you know, like, one of the things that I think is very notable is, and I can't remember which town, but specifies, like, two people per bedroom, and what is a bedroom? But who's actually going in and getting that registered information, and then following up? I think that's where a third, somebody who's been doing this would still be helpful.
So, what about if we, is this something, Jeremy, that you think that the halftime person that the, we're hoping that the community will vote for in your office could take on?
No, no.
Or could relieve you of?
No, um, no, I don't. I, I mean, I think it's a little more than a halftime person, but yeah, no, that's not something that they roll, that they would assume. I mean, to be honest, I think, I think I said this from the beginning, our registration ordinance that was passed by voters last, you know, last year. The definitions are challenging enough that we weren't able to, I think, adequately move forward with a program to register appropriately and monitor and enforce that registration. You know, we were looking at, I don't know, I don't know, remember what firm it was, but about $10,000 to, for a firm to manage the whole permitting or licensing registration provision, about $10,000 to do that, and they would actually monitor all of the platforms that are out there. They generate enforcement letters, they do all of that for about $10,000, and if you look at the number of rentals that we have in town, when I looked at it, you know, we could certainly pay for, with a registration fee of, say, $150, which is very low, in my opinion, considering how much they make per week, often renting these things. You know, it would pay for itself plus, so, you know, I think we were ready to pull the trigger on that with a, with a firm to help us, but our definitions were such that it made it nearly impossible for them to implement what we were asking them to implement. So, that's why we didn't move forward. So, Anita, I think we can, if we tweak our program enough, or tweak the ordinance enough, or, or create one, a new one, or mend one, we have the ability to work with a consult, a firm for about $10,000 or so to actually monitor the program, and it would actually pay for itself. It wouldn't be taxpayer dollars paying for it, in essence. Those people that are using the service, that are actually renting their homes on, as short-term, they're paying for that service rather than falling onto the general fund or onto all taxpayers, so it would not be a new, our, our new staff person planner is not gonna be doing short-term rentals likely. That's, I mean, the overall, but I think we could, for about $10,000, probably manage it and it'd be paid for.
Who would do the inspections? Who would be onsite doing the inspections of each?
Yes, so I think that's something that we would need to work through. I mean, certainly, if you look at the, the info that Pat put together, I think, I looked at it briefly right before we got on. I looked at it when Pat originally sent it, but I think one of the communities says inspections every five years, if I recall correctly, or have two years.
No, two, two communities say every five years, and one is less than that.
Yeah, I mean.
And one is everything by the, by the CEO doing the inspections.
So, likely, likely, I think we could work with the fire department and the code officer. You know, the code officer, new code officer Clint, he's a, he's a certified fire inspector, too. So, he's very, you know, they're, they're up on it, and I, he is, and I certainly know Chris Farley and Andrew Lowar as well. I, I think we could certainly work with both departments, especially if we had a revenue source that was actually paying for the services. I know the select board has brought up from time to time, you know, the costs to departments for doing the work we do. And again, if someone, you know, someone wanting to be a licensed facility and use their property to generate income, and you permit them, there should be a cost to it to pay for those fees, you know, to pay for that work that the town has to do. So, I think we could probably work with code and fire budgets and actually plug in some revenue sources from the permitting fees.
Right.
That and help it out, so I think. That and help it out. So um, I think between the departments, we could certainly do inspections at least every other year. Um, I think that's reasonable. I mean, I think we also need to keep in mind that these are different than hotels and motels. Um, you know, they are somebody, it's generally their single-family homes. It's, I think people that, I mean, I, I use Airbnb, um, at least pre-COVID. Um, and you know, it's, you go into it knowing it's a home. It's not like a hotel. Uh, it's a home. And I think people approach them differently, to be honest with you, and the, and the features that are going to change from a life safety perspective in a home are very different than they are in a hotel. So um, I think it's important to look at all of this. And I just wanted to comment really quickly. Um, I, I think it is important to at least have the conversation with Justin. Um, this, this, this guy, um, at least ask the question that you're asking, because I think Chris O is exactly right. What's the metrics? What, what are, what is the life safety inspection looking at? Um, you know, one of the communities said you gotta have, uh, you know, fire extinguisher smokes, carbon monoxide, this, this and this. Another one said you gotta comply with NFPA, yada, 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 and listed a host of codes. Those codes apply generally statewide already. They put it in their ordinance to codify it. Um, so you also need an inspector that understands what those codes are. Um, which isn't an easy thing.
If you choose to incorporate that, that wording into our uh, regulation, but I'm not in favor of that wording. So that, that's another item for us to discuss.
What's that?
I am not in favor of that wording where they put in all the codification chapters of this and that at Bar Harbor. Um.
Well, I will tell you, Anita, I, 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 my gut says every one of those code citations that they identified applies to your house today. Whether or not, whether or not you think, whether or not you think your house complies with those codes, my gut says is your house complies with those.
I'm sure it does. The reason is not that I don't like the codes or I don't like what they're asking for. The reason is that I find it very cumbersome to try and dig through codes online or wherever and try to figure out what you're asking for. It's very simple to simply state what they're asking for, restate the code.
It's very hard.
Clear in the rules what we're asking for, not make them run all over the place to figure out.
Well, I think, yeah, so I, to, to, to Anita's point and trying to, trying to bring this around. She's, uh, she's not expressing, Jeremy, uh, distaste for the codes themselves. She's, I think, expressing a preference for how Cape Elizabeth lists out the things that are required rather than listing the codes themselves.
Right.
Um.
I get it.
Yeah, I would.
Which is, which is, which is understandable. Go ahead, Pat.
No, I was just saying, I would definitely agree with that and listing everything out instead of referring to other codes because it is really cumbersome. And it's a deterrent, I think. I mean, so just write it all out.
I mean, I would even, go ahead, Jeannie.
Jeremy, does this have anything to do with ability to enforce or cite a violation if it's specifically listed?
Yeah, um, yeah, it, it does. And that's where I was going. I mean, I've been doing enforcement, this kind of work for a long time. It's critically important on the enforcement end. If there's an issue that the inspector can actually, I cite a code that says you're in violation of X, Y, and Z and have that code written. So likely what I would do is, or I think we should do, and since they generally apply already, is, is just say that they need to comply with life safety code 101 addition 2019. Um, well, Anita, it applies already and it's just like, it's not, it applies on the state level. They don't have the ability to, we don't necessarily have the ability to enforce it, but applies to your house already.
I'm gonna let Chris O jump in because he's, he's on, on the driving phone. Go ahead, Chris O.
Uh, I was just gonna say, we're, we're a long way from getting into the minutia of language.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, you know, a very simple thing here is that to Anita's and Pat's point, we can say we can cite a code and spell out in whatever we come up with, we can spell out what we can reference the code and its legal number and what standards it references. Like we can cover that, but we're
miles from there.
We're not, we're not drafting language yet. Like we're, that's a great point.
Yeah.
Let's, let's, let's get back to sort of some of the ideas of, for me, going through what all the work that Pat did to say, here are things that we really think. Here are key things that we really think we should try and implement is kind of where we need to.
Yeah, we, we should be taking, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chris. I agree with that. Um, so um, let's, let's do table that sort of the, what language we put into the enforcement side of things for a bit. Um, recognizing Jeremy's point that, that citing to something is important, you know, to citing to the code is important. It could be as simple as putting it in a footnote. You don't have to actually read through the whole thing.
Right.
Um, let's go ahead then and move on. Um.
Jeremy. Jeremy, see the little arrow on the um, page for the Adobe page. It's on the right-hand side.
No.
And there's a column on the right of that that goes export PDF and dit, dit, dit. If you click on that arrow, the page will fill the whole screen.
I don't see it, Jeannie. Sorry.
Um.
It's a tiny little arrow.
See the right-hand column?
No.
Yeah, okay, you're, you're looking at it. Right where your mouse pointer is, it says, uh, what is it? Content? Or something? Convert to? You see where it says convert to my, right next to that, there's a little arrow.
Go over to the left. Go over to the left, Jeremy.
To that. Yeah.
There, hit it. Hit that. Click it.
And that'll all go away.
You think so?
Yeah.
I know so.
Yeah.
There we go.
Jeannie knows.
There.
All right. I just wanted to share you, share with you. So we'll put this up on the town's website too. Um, just so this people know what we're looking at, what we're doing.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So um, I'm open to discussion now, um, whether we want to just go sort of from the top or if anybody wants to sort of lobby for something that we should tackle first. Um, it's hard, you know, there's so many different uh, things. Um, I, I heard from Anita the possibility um, of sort of just starting with the um, with the Cape Elizabeth ordinance and going down that one piece by piece and see if we're aligned with that or not. I was unfortunately quoted in the papers calling it draconian. That is not what I said. I want to go on record with a correction and say that I said it seems a little draconian. Which I think is a distinction that needs to be made because I actually am quite in favor of what's in the, the ordinance and um, you know, it, I, I'm gonna start shying away from that word, um, because it seems to be a buzzword for the press. Um, so I, I did want to just, you know, make that clarification. Um, and there may be things in there that are, that are a little bit stricter than we would like, and I'm open to hearing that discussion. So does that seem like a good way to go to start with that ordinance? Or Pat, go ahead?
Uh, yeah, no, I was just gonna say, I think it does. I think just uh, finding out what our definition of a permitted short-term rental for starters would be. Which is pretty much similar to what Cape Elizabeth has done. But yeah, I think because that was the easiest one to follow. So I agree with Anita. If we go through piece by piece following theirs, that would be good.
Okay. That sounds good. Well, Pat, since you created the spreadsheet, how would you like to um, sort of lead us through that discussion?
Um, as far as the definition, starting with the definition of permitted short-term rental?
Yeah, every part of it. We could just walk right through it.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying, I'm trying to share the, the, the involvement of the board so that people don't have to hear me drone on repeatedly.
Yeah. Well, do you guys, I mean, do you want to go over what Cape Elizabeth has, for example, for their permitted short-term rental?
I think that's what we were talking about. I think that, are we agreeing with that, Chris O?
Yeah.
Yep. So I think that's where we're gonna go is start with, with the Cape Elizabeth model, um, which as I've said, is not draconian. And um, and uh, and, 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 and figure out which parts of it do fit with what we're looking at. And then also um, which parts might not fit. I think that's a good approach to go to start with.
Uh, sure. So uh, theirs are a little different, I guess, because you have the primary resident hosted. This is where the property owner is in residence at the hosted property and it must be the primary residence and not in a separate dwelling on the property. So basically your house that you're living in, if you're renting out a room in your house. And the, the second one they have is the primary resident unhosted, where the property owner is not in residence. And again, though, it's the owner's primary residence and not in a separate dwelling on the property. So it's, I guess it's either when the owner is there or if they're not there, but there are two separate types of short-term rentals in Cape Elizabeth's eyes.
Right. And that would take us to the initial, sorry, that would take us to the initial discussion, which I think is one of our biggest discussions is the reason why they have these two um, definitions is because they don't allow unhosted, non-primary residents, unhosted rentals, unless it's seven acres or more. And that is, that is going to be a, a, I think a primary situation we need to address because um, that is the part of the, the ordinance that got me to, to reference draconian. And I keep saying I'm not gonna use that word and I keep using it. Uh, that is, that is a very strong stance against unhosted, non-primary residents um, units.
Chris O? Do they make a distinction? You, you've just used the phrase a couple times. Primary residence, hosted, unhosted. Do they actually make a distinction of primary residence versus?
Yeah.
Because.
Yeah, I think they, they, they view that if you own a place and then leave for three months and want to Airbnb it, that's okay.
Right. But, but I'm even thinking, like, one of the factors that we've talked about is that we have people who have summer cottages, which wouldn't be your primary residence, but maybe you're there for two months out of the summer and you rent it for one.
They do not. They do not make that distinction.
Right. So I just think that that's something we may want to consider because to my mind, that's kind of the same as a primary resident rental.
I hear.
Like, one of the things that I think we want to protect, that we want to keep and protect is the tradition of people who have a summer cottage and rent it for a chunk of the summer that they're not here. But it is their primary cottage, but it's not their primary legal residence.
Right. And I mean, different different towns have different definitions of the permitted short-term rentals. So I guess it would just be what would apply to our town the best.
Yeah, that's, I just, so I, I'm just thinking that primary residence language may, we may want to sort of tweak that or consider it.
There, there's a short-term rental adjacent in Cape Elizabeth and that's sort of the same category because it's not the primary residence.
But that's more like um, accessory apartment, isn't it?
Well, I'm just thinking that.
More like an ADU, right? Accessory dwelling.
Yeah.
Right. But it's that same principle that it's not the primary residence. It's the same owner. It seems like maybe that's where you could create that category. That's all I'm saying is.
Yeah.
Well, the short-term rental adjacent shows non, uh, okay, well, it says non-primary building on primary resident lot or a budding lot to primary residence.
Right. So this would be on lot owned by same, by license holder or something like that, not primary residence. I think that's where Chris O's, what Chris O's saying.
Yeah.
I don't think that we need to um, try to shoehorn in the um, the lakeside cottage uh, into the definitions that are in Cape Elizabeth. Actually, I'm a little surprised that these three communities don't address the cottage concept or your second summer home that's there over at the lake. Um.
Well, I think.
I, I think what I'm suggesting is that maybe we're gonna have to create a definition for that and we're gonna have to address that directly.
Right. No, that, that's what I'm saying.
Right. But, but just remember that in these, in these definitions, we've got one, two, three, four different types of rentals that um, Cape Elizabeth came up with. The, the short-term rental of spaces in your primary residence. Um, the short-term rental of uh, your, your primary residence if you're not there. Um, and then if you have a really seven acre, a large lot and you've got people renting and then you've got the um, adjacent, which would be say your garage or a cottage on your lot or something like that. So that's, that's the four that, that we've got models of. And then we need to add a fifth, I think.
But it is there in different towns. Bar Harbor has it. They have a vacation rental with not primary residence. So just because Cape Elizabeth doesn't have it, doesn't mean we don't have a model.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, and we might want to just keep it a little more simple, like some of these other towns do where they say uh, primary residence rented for less than 30 days or non-primary residence rented for less than 30 days.
Right.
Because Cape Elizabeth gets a little well.
Draconian.
Hey.
Jeannie, where?
No, but I think, I think there's a point there that they get a little bogged down in the details of some of it.
But and I think that, that was really my initial point was that when I heard the primary, I was really thinking we may want to pull back from distinguishing exactly primary residence. You know, it could be, it could just be, and again, we're, we're wordsmithing ahead of ourselves, I think. And I started by just was asking the question, like, it could be resident, I don't know, but we're wordsmithing ahead of ourselves. I just think we want to consider that.
Well, the other. Jeannie, can you point out the wording of this um, of Bar Harbor's?
It's in page four on the right-hand column.
The other two towns do have, um, I think, a little less a more straightforward definitions, but they do differentiate between primary and non-primary.
Yeah, and I, I will go on record as saying, I believe that the, the primary residence distinction is an important one. Um. Because those are people who are taking advantage of an opportunity to make a little bit more money, but they actually contribute to the town in a, you know, they're, they're actual residents of the town.
Right.
Um, so I, I actually believe that primary residence is an important distinction. And um, you know, I, I, the, the Cape Elizabeth model, I mean, I read some articles on the Cape Elizabeth one. And one of the things that they were saying was well, the idea of hosted and unhosted, the reason why they went against the unhosted was that they felt that if you were either an adjacent property owner, which they, that, that sort of helps you exclude, get out of the unhosted, um, if you're adjacent or whatever, that you're in the neighborhood and you have to face your neighbors. You know, I think that's a little hoity-toity. Oops, and now I'm gonna get in the press again. Um, it, it seemed like it's a little bit, um, you know, sort of like a, I don't feel like Camden has seen um, real negative impact from short-term rentals insofar as, um, you know, large parties and getting 17 people into one small house and those sort of things. That's not to say that it can't happen. Um, I think we're more concerned, you know, we're looking, we're approaching this more from an affordable housing and, and sort of, you know, opening up those sorts of things, I think is more of our goal. I, I don't want to speak for everybody here, but we do talk about the reduced supply of rental housing on the market. And so um, people who are uh, you know, who, who are primary, are in primary residence and then they are, you know, either uh, an adjacent, like an ADU accessory dwelling unit or um, or um, those, those sorts of things I tend to be a little bit more in favor of. Um, then, then people who are just buying a property and then putting it into the, the, the short-term rental market in total.
My, my point was that I think we want to kind of give some credit for people who are from like, you know, a lot of the summer cottages, you know, like places on Madonna cook and things belong to people in town.
Yeah, and I get that part of it. I'm not trying to exclude those people. That, that, yeah.
I, I just. I just, I just, I want us, I want us to think about having some language that says, you know, if you, if it's like your primary summer cottage, you're, that's a different thing than somebody who never spends, never sets foot in Camden and their property is rented twelve months out of the year.
Right, and now I see Mark Ratner has his hand up. Go ahead, Mark.
I, I was just going to say one thing. One of the things that, just to put another twist on it, I don't, I don't think that, that the Lake Cabin is, has been a concern for a lot of the people that I hear from. Since I've been in the select board, I've gotten numerous letters, email and, and physical letters complaining about what they call dark streets, that in the wintertime, they're the only house on the street where there used to be friends and family and stuff. Now they're the only house on the street that has anybody living there. And that's one of the big concerns is that we have, we have whole neighborhoods that are just vacant now, which really hurts us as a year-round community. So I put myself that-
I totally agree, and I think that's a difficult thing to address, but very important to consider. Go ahead, Anisha.
I, I agree with Mark, but as, as you point out, Ethan, I don't think it's something, I don't even know how we'd address that. I have neighbors who have bought a property that was a year-round and, as I might have mentioned it on the meeting, they're proud to state that they live in Florida in the winter and they'll come up here in the summer and that's their plan. They bought the house, you know, you can't, you can't legislate against that. And I think that that's happening a lot, that people are buying a house. So that's, that may indeed be another issue and not necessarily related to the short-term rental.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think the, I think the upshot of this is if we were to go that step where we eliminate unhoseded, short-term rentals, that might impact dark streets because they might go ahead and, and do long-term leases. And then you would have families in those homes. So that, that is sort of, I, I, I think it's a consideration. I agree with you, Anita. It's not, it's not the, it's not the only thing. We can't obviously legislate it all away. But it, it, there may be a tangible side effect of, of certain decisions that we make. Go ahead, Chris.
I was just going to say, you know, there is, even if you look in the last edition of the comprehensive plan, it gives us some numbers of, from the last census of how many houses are in Camden versus how many families live year-round. So I think we are seeing more of the dark house scenario, but there's also a long, long, long history of houses in Camden being occupied only half the year or less. So we're always going to, we're always going to have a bit of that. But even, if you say, if you said to someone, well, you're here for four months and you want to rent your house spring and fall, or as I said last meeting, you know, we had people who used to rent their house for nine months. Again, it's still their part of the community. And I, I feel like what we're really, I almost feel like what we want to start with is really trying to define the true non-resident rental market. And maybe that's a way to start it, is to try and define one thing.
Right, and resident is also, is also a technical and loaded term, right? Because someone could live in Florida but be a resident here only three months out of the year.
Right.
And so they aren't, they aren't technically, it's not their primary residence. And so we have to be careful with language, but I hear what you're saying. We are, we, we do, we do want to target those who are just in it for the investment.
Right.
I think that, I think that, at least that's what I, that's sort of what I feel, is that, that those are the ones that are most harmful to, to affordable housing and, and everything else. So how do we, how do we create a definition that captures that?
Yeah.
I think the, the primary, the first response to that is, you asked the question, do, do they rent short-term rental full-time year-round?
Yeah.
Do they live in Camden? Now, I, I don't, we have to be careful excluding, there are people in Camden, I'm sure, who are buying their properties and, and doing them full-term, short-term rentals as well. People have to make choices sometimes. And, you know, if, if I had a property that was available year-round, I, I would personally make the choice to rent it out to a long-term tenant on, on a yearly lease because I feel like that would be the right thing to do. But there is no question that there's a lot more money to be made doing a short-term rental. I've checked one place on VRBO, we talk about Airbnb all the time, but let's not mistake that VRBO is right in this mix. Checked one place recently on VRBO, if you wanted to rent it for a month, it's a two-bedroom home, the cost would be over seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That, that's a month in, in June to July. Where the, the house would likely rent for under two thousand on a, on a, on a yearly lease, two thousand a month. So that's sort of where we're, we're going.
Well, I'm, when you're talking about, oh, when you're talking about looking at short-term rentals, I mean, a lot of the lake houses appear to me in the summer to be short-term rentals. Just walking down Bokeh Ave. So.
And I think, I think what Chris is saying is that the families might use those for a month or so out of the year, or even less, they might even come up for a week. But it's technically still their long-term generational family camp.
Right.
And then, and then they, they do short-term rentals the rest of the time. It's, it's a tough call, right? You know, we can put caps, that's another way to do it. We can put, you know, limit the number of days that they can do short-term rentals to the point, I mean, part of this, what you could do, you can, you can wield the carrot or the stick. The stick would be the more, you know, limiting the number of days that you can do short-term rentals such that it becomes more profitable for them to put it into long-term rentals for the, the eleven months that they're not here. But even that's, you know, most people, for some reason, you know, obviously it's, it's pretty common, but people are on this thing where we like, you know, you want a twelve-year, a full-year lease. And so how many people are out there signing eleven-year, eleven-month leases? You know, I don't know.
Maybe another way to look at it would be on, at least with some of them, would be more on the definition side that, you know, if it's a seasonal, if it's, if it's an actual seasonal property that's not a year-round, that's not a fully winterized year-round house, there's a different-
Absolutely agree on the seasonal. If it's not a winterized home, that, that, that is some-
The housing stock, and, you know, that's, that's a different question.
Yeah, that is a different question.
I agree, Ethan, that the, the, the way that the other communities seem to be getting at this is to limit the number of times you can rent it. Either to Cape Elizabeth, two rentals per seven days in a primary, primary residence hosted. And so you look at those numbers in the various communities and that's where you see the way that they're trying to get at it. Permitted short-term rentals, it's primary resident unhoseded. Cape Elizabeth, one rental per seven days. So you're looking at number of rentals and you're looking at number of days per week. Kennebunkport rentals per year, one rental for less than thirty consecutive days. So it, it's number of days and it's number of times per unit of time. That is the way to get at the, make it less attractive for someone to buy a property and use it as a short-term rental investment.
So we're, we're talking caps. Go ahead, Pat.
We're talking limitations and caps, and that's what we need to discuss. And maybe, so, so some of these are really sticky and challenging and could take our entire one or two or three hours we're doing, spending this evening.
We're not spending three hours.
I think we should identify the challenging questions like this one. The challenging question of the, of the, you know, the, the lake cottage and all these ones that are really hard to get at and just make them really clear questions that are our assignments to think about and make proposals for at the next meeting. And then move on to the things that we can agree on.
Right, so, so let me, let me just, I want to, I want to put a finer point on the, the lake cottage because we use that term. I want to use, I want to move to a term of seasonal or not, okay?
Yeah.
Because seasonal doesn't count. We're going to already, I think we already have agreed that if it's only available for four months out of the year, short-term rentals are appropriate. So that's the, I think that's the first thing I think that we want to, you know, talk about. I'm well open to discussion on that, but I want to, there are people who own what they would call a lake cottage that are, that are winterized and, or could be rented year-round and maybe even are. So I want to just make sure we make that, that distinction because I think seasonal is a better way to describe the ones that we want to make an exception for because if it's only available for four months, they can't even do long-term rental technically. Sorry, I have to let my dog out. I'll be right back. And from there, I would say, you know, just looking at, at the, this, the other distinction I think we need to do is, is figure out what role hosted has. Yeah, I, I originally had never considered that, that, that I would be in favor of banning unhoseded rentals. And unhoseded meaning that it's just a standalone property. But I, I have since started to think about, you know, that in concert with the dark streets that, that, you know, the dark houses that Mark referenced, the investments coming in just to buy properties and put them into short-term rentals. This is happening and I am more inclined at this point in time to consider banning unhoseded, short-term rentals.
On pri, on primary residence?
Not on primary res, I mean, how is a primary resident unhoseded? So that's the point. The residence does come in, right? You could, you, you're absolutely right that, that, and that's why I think that we have to, we have to include that. And that's why the language is tricky.
Right.
And that's where, where the, the enforcement of even the current ordinance that was passed out, you know, by the select board, the, under the police power, ran afoul of the, of the group, the, the companies that can do the survey for us and do the, the algorithm because they can't, they can't determine by looking at a, a listing on Airbnb or VRBO whether it's somebody's primary resident.
Right, right.
And that's, that's, that's a tricky, tricky thing. And so I think we do need to come up with a solution to that. But, but then that's where I think Cape Elizabeth, if I'm not mistaken, their basic policy is unless you live on that lot or above that lot, it's an unhoseded, non-primary res, you know, it's an unhoseded rental and it's not, it's not allowed unless it's seven acres or more. Which I never understa, I didn't really understa, I don't really understand necessarily the logic of that part of it other than, you know, it's possible to have a seven-acre lot and have a home very close to the border, right next to another house. So I'm not sure that the seven acres makes, to me, it doesn't make, I, I'm not sure I understand the logic of it.
I mean, you could do some, Ethan, you could do something, a lot size, I mean, a lot of communities use lot sizes. You could do something lot sizes and then the, the rental has to be X number of feet away from adjacent residential properties. That's another way to look at it as well.
Yeah, and, and again, I'm a little less concerned about the, I don't know how to put this, but like, I know that it's possible that, that there are like disturbances that come from these short-term rentals and that sort of thing, but I just don't feel like that's a primary, it's not something we're seeing. So, yeah, so I guess if I'm, if I'm, I guess I would like to take the temperature of the board. I know we're not all here. But how does the board feel about a ban on unhoseded, not primary residence, unhoseded rentals? A la Cape Elizabeth. Anita, you're muted.
I don't, I don't know yet how I feel about that, but it looks to me like primary residence unhoseded can be rented for one time every seven days in Cape Elizabeth and can be rented forty-two rentals per year. I'm not sure how they define a rental.
No, I don't think that's correct.
That, well, I mean, that's Cape Elizabeth page two.
Primary resident unhoseded, that's how that, that's what she's talking about.
Oh, primary residence, that's different.
Unhoseded, oh, it's just primary, okay.
Yeah, so primary residence, that, and I like that provision. That's allowing somebody to vacate their house for a couple, couple of rentals a year or maybe forty-two total days or something like that and rent it out. They're, they're not going to be there, but they live in that house.
I go on vacation and I rent my, I rent my house.
Yeah, and pay for your vacation.
All right, so-
I wanted to, I wanted to narrow the discussion, Anita, to not primary residence unhoseded.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is that, is that category even in the chart that we're looking at, Pat?
That is the, that is not permitted in Cape Elizabeth, period. Unless you have seven acres.
It may be one of, under one of the other towns.
It is Bar Harbor has a vacation rental.
And Kennebunkport has too, in a way that they say non-owner occupied or owner occupied. But, so Ethan, you're talking about unhosed, all right, non-primary residence unhoseded.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm trying, this is what I consider sort of the low-hanging fruit, right? I'm hoping that we're pretty much in agreement on this. The, the person who owns these properties does not live on that property ever and they have it full-time in the short-term rental market.
Yep.
How does the board feel about not allowing that or putting very strict caps on that or a very, a very high, you know, you know, licensing fee on that? I mean, there, yeah, I mean, it's, so that's what I'm trying to get to. I think that's the meat of the question on those.
If I owned one of those and I looked at the rules that you're talking about, I'd go, okay, then that means I have to live in my, my investment house for a week a year so that, so that-
Well, no, that gets us to the primary residence part of it, so I hear you.
So, I mean, find a way to-
I'm not interested right now in, in, in jumping through the loopholes first. I want to start with the very low-hanging fruit. Someone who owns a house in Camden who does not live in that house, who has it full-time in the, in the short-term rental market.
Except for one or two weeks a year?
No, I, Anita, I really am not entertaining that right now. I mean this. I want to get to where the board's temperature is on this question. Someone who buys a property as a, as a, as an investment, has no interest and no intent to live in it and who puts it full-time in the short-term rental market. How do we feel about that property specifically?
I don't like-
Okay, one at a time. So let's go, Chris will go because he can't raise his hand.
I said, on that very specific case, the person never sets foot in Maine, never has any communication, it's just, it's rented twelve months of the year. No, I don't think that that should be allowed, period.
Okay, and I do want to clarify- Okay, and I do wanna clarify though, the person might live in Camden.
Yep.
But we're talking about a house that they own that they do not live in.
They do not live in, they do not, like, nope.
Right. It's a straight investment profit property. So you're, you would favor regulating those either out of existence or strongly regulated?
I think if you add in that it has to be rented year-round, you may be defeating your purpose.
No, I hear you, but I, this isn't, I'm not adding this into any ordinance. I'm trying to take the temperature of the board.
Right. So for, for me, that property which is never re- never used by the owner needs to either not be allowed or be a very distinct market the way a B and B or something else is.
What, what did you say, Chris?
It either isn't allowed or it's very well-regulated and inspected and other things like a B and B or an inn.
Ethan got booted. He's gotta rejoin.
Oh, all right.
Sorry about that.
Um, yeah, I, I think we're already, we're already regulating, we're already coming up with regulations for these rentals. So.
Right, but it would be a different level. It would just be, I mean.
Much stricter standards.
Yeah, it would be a very different market the way if you have an inn or a B and B, you're, you are facing very different regulations and inspections.
Okay, so we said, yeah, so we said.
If you have a property that is strictly a commercial short-term rental apartment or house, then that should be identified as such and termed and regulated that way.
I like the idea of, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm good, I'm good, go.
I like the idea of what Ethan was talking about as far as, um, strict minimum days for, um, unhosted non-primary. Or we could just say they have to be year-round rentals.
Do you mean minimum or maximum number of days it's rented? What do you mean?
Um, well, I was starting by saying minimum amount of days using that as a starting point.
What?
So if you had a real, if you had a really high minimum amount of days that these types of properties could be rented, that would deter a lot of this in and out of short-term rentals. So let's say you say that it has to be rented for at least, I don't know, six months? Three months? I mean, if we're talking about using minimum maximum stays as a deterrent. Or we could go along with what Chris O was saying, uh, referring and saying that it's not allowed at all. That it would have to be a year-round rental.
When, when you say minimum, are you saying like a, a minimum length of stay?
That was one of my thoughts, given what Ethan had, uh, brought up earlier in the conversation.
I'm, I'm back, by the way. Jeremy, can I ask you to pull down? I think we all have the spreadsheet up, but I don't know that we have a lot of public participation. I'd like to just sort of mostly see who we're talking with.
Sorry about that.
That's fine. Um, okay, so sorry that I, I got bounced out of that meeting, that, that, that thing, so, um, who was speaking before I just jumped back in and interrupted?
I think we all were.
Pat, go ahead, Pat, and finish what you were saying, I'm sorry.
Um, well, I was just saying that I thought the, your idea, what you were talking about in the beginning of having stricter minimum rental times could help with the unhosted non-primary scenario. Or, uh, as Chris O had mentioned also, you could just not allow unhosted non-primary residents uh, properties.
So, moving back to my question about taking the temperature of the board, um, I will go on record as saying someone who does not live in a property ever, who rents it solely as a, an investment, I am either in favor of, um, putting a cap on the number of days or eliminating them altogether. How do you feel about that, Anita?
I like the idea of putting a cap on. I'm not sure about limiting altogether. Um, and I, I think, you know, number of rentals per year, a number of days per, uh, rentals per week, I don't even know what that would be.
Right.
To try and guess what, what somebody's motivations are with regard to investment is sort of a dangerous place to go.
Yeah, but I would gently, I would gently point out that if you, um, say you can only rent it for three months out of the year, short-term, then you're just increasing the dark, dark houses on the street.
Well, if you, I just, just something that just occurred to me. If we say you can't rent it every month of the year, they'll just lift, leave it off the market for three weeks and say, oh, I was there. We don't have any way to enforce that. If you said, for example, that you could only rent it, if you put a cap on short-term rentals, then it would incentivize somebody to put it back into the long-term rental market.
Right.
If they're not gonna live in it.
Right.
So a cap, a cap on short-term rentals.
With a definition, please.
For non-primary unhosted. If you have a very strict cap of short-term rentals on that property.
And by strict cap, what are you saying, forty-two days?
Yeah, something like that. That's, you know, not even the full summer. That.
Right.
Really, that incentivizes the, uh, owner of a property will, will do better finding long-term rentals. And, you know, that's a whole nother, there's a whole nother dis- discussion of what's our definition of long-term rental.
Sounds like a horror to, um, watch over. I can't think of the word I want, but, uh, to monitor.
The monitoring enforcement absolutely is, of all of this is.
And if somebody has a license to rent short-term for forty-two days, then somebody's gotta be making sure that that's all that happens and.
Right, but, but let me, let me just, let me just point out that, that, um, I am, I am, uh, under the, I guess I'm not on video, sorry about that. Um, I understand that, um, something like, they, they can provide, um, the, the, the host can provide a document produced by Airbnb showing the number of rentals that have come through that property in any given month or any given year. And we can, we can ask them to identify what they use for a rental service, Airbnb or VRBO. I'm sure they both can provide this information. It's now required for taxes anyway. And if, for instance, Airbnb now automatically collects the taxes due to the state of Maine, whereas for several years they did not. And so those are built into the rental price. So you can require, you can require someone to identify who they use for a rental service. They can advertise on Craigslist. That might not be as easy to, to monitor. They can use Airbnb or VRBO. They could use both. They could use a local, you know, vacation rental place or whatever. And then they can use, whatever they are using, they have to certify based on what they did with that property during the year. Here's how many days we rented it. It can be, it can be produced. Now, can they fudge that? Can they, can they, can they use two services and only give us one? Those are real things. But the penalties could be built in for any kind of, you know, deception or fraud. That would be, you know, let's go draconian on that. Let's say you mislead or you provide false information, you lose your right to rent in town forever. Or for five years or whatever.
When, when you look at a lot of the other ordinances, they have similar requirements to what you're talking about, Ethan. And there's, like they say, that you have to be able to list at any time the people and the number of days that they're renting, um, information like that has to go forward. And then also there's different, um, suspension and revocation of the permits that can occur given certain scenarios. So it's certainly, yeah, what people are already doing and.
I mean, I mean, it's, it's, again, it's the care. You, you require people to provide you the information themselves. And then if they are untruthful or deceptive, then you bring the stick out. So, uh, I've got Chris O on record, I think, um, in, uh, in favor of capping, uh, unhosted non-residential properties to a, a shorter term somewhere, we, I think forty-two, it's a number I love. It's even on my mug. If you guys know the reference. The Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
The answer to the, the answer to the ultimate question.
Yeah.
Um, however, um, forty-two is less than, less than, you know, less than, it's like basically a little over a month and certainly not the whole summer. And, um, I think that's also the number actually that, uh, if I'm not mistaken, somebody in their ordinance used, um, that we were reviewing, whether it's Bar Harbor or, uh, Cape Elizabeth.
It's what, it's six weeks.
Basically, right. And so, um, in six weeks, this house that I referenced could make ten thousand dollars. And they might opt to do that and then not rent it at all for the rest of the time. Or they could make six thousand dollars and then put it on the market for fifteen hundred a month for the rest of the year.
On a long-term.
Yep, long-term. Or they could, you know, just decide, well, now I'm only making that, so I'll just do a year lease and not have to deal with all the hassle. And I've heard stories and read articles of people who, once they get out of the short-term rental market are relieved. Because there's, there's a, a lot of management that goes around with it, dealing with the people coming in and out, the complaints that they have. You get a regular tenant in there who's solid, who takes care of the house, you know, those sorts of things. Now, certainly there are others, there's another side to having a long tenant who doesn't do those things. Um, and complaints, but it, there, it's not an easy game, really, the, the short-term rental business. Um, it's not as, it's not to sit back and count your money. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that go into it. Um, and disincentivizing some of it, you know, by limiting how much they can do might be the best approach.
Right.
Rather than an outright ban. Um, I, so I'm, I'm open to, to the consideration of that. So I got that from Chris O and I think from, from Anita both. And Pat, did you chime in on this yet?
Um, yes, no, I think it's a good approach, something we can, um, and then also on our own, I think as Anita suggested, figure out maybe what types of time period we might think is, um, applicable and come back with information like that.
Okay, um.
There's another factor here and that's multiple, people who own multiple properties. You wanna let them rent all of them or you wanna limit it to one? I mean, there are lots of them now.
Oh, of course, absolutely right. And, um.
They'll just flip him into another LLC, to be honest with you.
Well, yes, but we still know it doesn't have to be the same ownership. We can find out who's the principal. We can find, the mailing addresses are often the same.
Yep.
I, I'm okay with it being per property.
Per property.
I mean, it, it, again, we're back to, um, yeah, um, the, the, there's a question about, um, you know, what if someone owns ten properties? Um, are, are, are we okay with taking those ten properties out of the long-term rental market and allowing them to rent them for forty-two days a year? Just as is. I mean, I guess that's probably not gonna be much of an investment at that point, right? I think, I think that's Chris O's point, that we've disincentivized enough that somebody's not gonna be buying up properties just to rent it for forty-two days.
Right, whereas, right now, you are gonna get people who are gonna say, oh, well, I could rent it for six months, easy, in summer, and then Christmas and February. Great, I'll do that.
Yep, and I think, I think properties run year-round here surprisingly. I mean, they, they, I, I, certainly not, you know, the seasonal ones, but, but, you know, I think, uh, you, you'd be surprised at how robust the, even the, the winter market is. It's just, you can't get the same prices. Uh, go ahead, Anita.
Um, I'm looking at Cape Elizabeth on page, uh, two, the second or third line down. Rentals per year for an unhosted primary residence. There's your forty-two.
Okay, that's unhosted primary residence.
So, so I don't, that, forty-two rentals is like.
It's not rentals, I think it's days, it's days.
That's what I wanted to get clarified.
Is that correct, Pat?
Forty-two rentals is one a week.
Uh, yeah, but they have rentals per seven day for that primary resident hosted is one.
One.
And then it said rentals per year were forty-two.
Yeah.
So.
That's one every week.
That's forty-two weeks.
It's almost one every week, with the exception of.
I was saying forty-two days out of the year that you can rent, so six weeks total.
Yeah, so I, I'm with Chris O on that. So that might be where I, where I ran the forty-two, but I, I misapplied it. Um, there is, there are other places. Sorry about the dogs in the background. This is what happens when people come home. Um, there, there was something I know that was limiting in a, I believe in a primary unhosted, not a pri- sorry, not primary, not primary unhosted, uh, was limiting the number of days. So I'm looking, I'm scanning the chart for that. But anyway, even if it's not in these, I think that's something that I think we could, we could entertain and, and, and talk about because I think that is a, a very effective tool that, that doesn't get the, that doesn't get the, you know, the, the stigma of an outright ban. Um, but also, um, disincentivizes buying up investment properties just to rent them to short-term market.
So you're ta- so you went to the forty-two days instead of forty-two rentals per year?
That's right. Forty-two days for an unhosted non-primary residence type deal.
Right, it can't be forty-two weeks because then it wouldn't be the primary residence, so.
Yeah, no, those are, now that I'm looking at, there's, they're, they're days because like in the primary resident hosted, it can be three hundred and sixty-five days a year that they do this.
Yeah, so that is days. That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
Even for a primary residence, they limit it.
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm actually less concerned about that aspect, although I'm, I'm willing to talk about, uh, caps on days for primary residents, but it's, I, I, I know that we have a problem with the algorithm and, and monitoring, but I'm okay with fifty percent plus one day. You know, that, that whole logic that was in the, the, the select boards ordinance. I don't know if you're all intimately familiar with it, but that's essentially what the ordinance says. If you are, if it's your primary residence and you live there, cause there are snowbirds who could go south and, um, uh, rent out their place while they're gone for four months or six months, um, or, or say five months and twenty-eight days or whatever it would be. Um, I don't think that's, that's harming the long-term rental housing problem that we, that we're looking at and I think is our primary motivation here. Um, I think the ones, it's, it's really again targeting these, um, properties that are being bought for investment. Um, those are the ones that I wanna, I wanna take a look at. And believe me, I don't think these people are gonna be hurting if they have to go to a long-term rental. Have you seen it? There's just no, there's no stock and prices are out of this world. Anything that even gets posted on Craigslist as a, as a Camden rental is a fraud. I don't know if you've even followed it. They, they scrape from like Trulia and, and Zillow and other sites and they post fake houses. And then like if you, if you just copy and paste the, the, uh, the description of the Craigslist ad into your browser, you'll see it pop up from like seven different sites. Properties that haven't been available since twenty-twenty-one. It's not for rent and they're trying to get people to give their personal information, you know, off Craigslist. There's, there are, as far as I can tell, unless you, I have not contacted any real estate, you know, rental agencies or anything. As far as I can tell, from my review of, of the, of Craigslist, there is zero stock for rentals in Camden.
In Knox County.
In Knox County, true, it's true. And, and it goes to Waldo County at least, you know, at least to the coast.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, you know, so these people who have bought investment properties that they're doing short-term rentals will still find that they're making a profit if they go to a long-term rental. Um, I, I, I feel pretty comfortable in that, they just won't be making the same profit. Um, so I think that's a pretty important distinction and, and decision if we've come to that. Now, we, it's obviously not an official vote right now. But if we're willing to take what I consider, what I'm trying to say is called the low-hanging fruit. Investment properties put into solely the, the short-term rental market and capped them at a, a number like forty-two. I think we do a significant, we make a significant progress disincentivizing, um, buying up investment properties simply to put them in the short-term rental market. How does the rest of the board feel about that? Thumbs up from Anita. Go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea and that forty-two is a number that we can figure out over time. Want to keep it right at forty-two or something else?
You know how I feel about forty-two, it is the answer.
I like it.
But as Chris O said, it does also compute to six weeks, which I think is a decent, um, a decent number as well.
Oh, six week, yeah, yeah.
Yep, and Chris O, how are you on this whole thing?
I.
Hi. Okay, and Jeremy's opinion doesn't count, but I'm curious, Jeremy, what your opinion is? Do you want us, do you want to plead the fifth on this?
I mean, I'll kind of plead the fifth, but I, what I'd like to do is try to, you know, um, put down in writing what you guys are really looking at and then send that to some of those firms that I've been working with in the past to see if they're able to, you know, take what we're doing and fit it into their system. And I do know that they have, you know, folks like me, like, oh, you know, zoning folks and land use people that do this and ordinance work to help. So, um, I think if we can kind of narrow down what we want and then I can share that with them and see if it can work with their system, I think that's where, that's the best place to be.
Uh huh, and so Jeremy, how did you feel about my, um, suggestion that, um, we can, we can force, uh, renter hosts to self-report uh, based on what they get from their hosting sites? They can pull that information and provide it and then provide, uh, significant penalties for, you know, not meeting that.
Yeah, I think the challenge is, is like actually determining from an enforcement piece. So how do we get them to, um, to apply? Like, how do we find out who's out there?
Right, you say, you say, where do you list your property? Airbnb, VRBO, Craigslist, local rental company, other. Okay, from those, when they identify those, from those, please send to us your, your twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, uh, rental days from each of those platforms. And then they can, they can, they can modify it, they can cheat, they could lie, they can steal. But if, if, if they say they're not on VRBO and then we find them on our VRBO.
That's the problem, when we say we find them on VRBO, I mean, it's hard for us to actually find these properties. I mean, we can go through and you can say, okay, that one's for sure in Camden and you can know that address. But we don't have that ability to really, uh, I mean, it's kind of hard on an enforcement and to make that happen.
We don't know the address and I don't know how these companies, these companies that you're, the company that you would be talking about working with.
Yeah.
Um, VRBO or Airbnb, they don't give out addresses until you've rented it.
Right.
So how, so the only thing you do is show you a picture of it, so we'd have to be intimately familiar with every residence.
Well, they give you a general location as well.
Right, so, so who's driving around the streets? I mean, sure, we think we know all the houses here, but you know, how are we really?
I mean, I, I feel pretty comfortable that, I mean, and I'm not, and I'm not saying that I'm, you know, I, I feel pretty comfortable, I could go on to Airbnb, search Camden and, and figure out where most of those properties are.
Uh, just, just as an aside, I will tell you, I am renting a place in upstate New York in September. And I used Google Earth, Google Maps, Street View to figure it out. I never left my, my home, but I figured out that the property I wanted was in fact across the street from the hotel where my friends are staying.
Yep. And you could do an image, you could do, you could do a reverse image search, call up the property and it'll pull, it'll pop up the Zillow profile right off of that.
So who's spending that time on all these?
I hear you, Anita, that, that is an absolute question. The, 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 this is where we get into the question though of what is the, what is, what is more important? Um, putting self, self-reporting on the, on the applicant and then putting a severe penalty for violation versus actually going out and regularly enforcing. I mean, if we, if we like, we like, if we put out a bounty, you know, I mean, they're doing some terrible things down in Florida with anti-trans laws and things like that. If we put out a bounty in town for, you know, citizen enforcement of, of Airbnb, win five hundred dollars if you find an Airbnb that's, that's violating these rules. You would be surprised how easy it is. I mean, I could, I could go on, I could go online right now and make, you know, a thousand bucks.
Uh, I, I can.
Don't want to do that, no bounties.
I think he's kidding.
I know.
I'm, I'm, I'm only kind of kidding.
Well, here's, here's, here's an example of the far end. Palm Springs, California, their rental market is so huge, they have an entire city division on enforcement of rental policies. And it's all reported by neighbors because like, if you have, uh, the primary example is that there's a noise ordinance, if you're renting a house, you cannot basically make any noise outside. And if anybody calls, they have a division, and this is one of the things where it's the reporting and like, who do they call? But they called the rental enforcement department of the city government, who shows up and knocks on your door and the, the tenant gets fined and the property owner gets fined. And if it's egregious, they lose their permit to rent.
Right.
But they have an entire city division devoted to them. But it's reported by the neighbors, so if we go forward with this and you said, all right, you, the house next door has just had like three months of short-term rentals. And they can say, all right, I know that I can go to the town office and say, whoever owns this house is like, neighbors will turn them in because they're tired of it.
Yeah.
They already do.
Right.
Yeah.
They already do.
And, and with citizen awareness out there and technology, I mean, people are a lot more into this stuff, I think, at least from what I'm hearing about different areas where they use this and they have been in the past. So it's certainly something to think about.
Yeah.
Jeremy, would the companies you're talking to have any models for this kind of limited rental absentee?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, they align up their, 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 how they do it, um, based on the ordinances that you have, so. And every ordinance is, you know, kind of different. Ours was challenging, this six months plus one day is really challenging for all the firms. Um, they don't know how to get their head around it, they can't, um.
Right, and we talked about, um, the homestead exemption is one. Um, we might be able to raise awareness around the homestead exemption and, um, use that as our model.
Yep.
Because that's a, that's a box that can be checked.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Who doesn't take it that is, that is a full-time resident?
Right, no, it's a good.
People who are unaware of it.
Right, and then.
To let people know about it if it's.
That's my point.
Yeah, alright.
Yeah.
And then all tax returns, they have, um, other towns use tax returns as a way to identify your primary residence. There were a couple of other things that they listed in the other town ordinances.
Yeah.
For that.
Tax return is good, you can require any kind of documentation.
Right.
Um, and, and, you know, there, there, there are, you know, we might, it might, there, there might be a, you know, early on, and, and again, this is something I think that comes down to, uh, select board will and, and whether they're, uh, on board with. But, you know, there might be room to hire somebody, short-term, pardon the pun, to, um, to, uh, just go on to Airbnb and pull up, if you've searched Camden, Maine, I think you'd get like two hundred and eighty properties or something like that. And you could actually book and then cancel. And when you book, you get the, you get the address. You know, I mean, this is all out there, you know, and, and, and I think that's a real, that's a real strategy. You book it, you get the address and then you cancel, you get your refund. And then you go to the next one and you book it, you get the address, you cancel, you get your refund. All of a sudden you have a registry of the three, you know, it wouldn't take that long to do all three hundred and eighty or however many properties there are. Um, that's, that's, I mean, there's plenty of ways to enforce without hiring a firm.
I mean, one of the challenges though, one of the challenges though is you can, you can, you know, set it up so that you're only up there for a month, right? And then you, and then you back down and then you're no longer there, but you wouldn't ident, you wouldn't be able to identify that as a, as a rent.
What I'm suggesting is that we could identify the address of all the properties.
Okay, yeah.
That, that would give you, that would at least give you that much information.
Yeah.
And that, and that, and that allows you to send a notice directly to them saying you are in the short-term rental market, you are required to register, you are required, these are the rules, you can only rent your place for this, if you're this, if you're this, you can rent it for this. And, and you put, you give them full notice. I mean, this is, this is, go ahead, Chris O.
Uh, well, I was just going to say, going back to the beginning of the meeting and the point of inviting someone who is doing this to come, they can discuss what the processes that they use to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know. Yeah, those guys are, those guys are safety enforcement, not so much, um.
Well, I know, but I'm saying there are other people.
Oh, yeah, we, yes. We can get one of the firms to meet with us, no problem.
Yep, and I have no, I have no, no, uh, dog in the fight as to whether we use a firm or hire a part-time person or whatever is most efficient, other than, other than I don't think we need to view it as though we're tied to the firms because, uh, an ingenious person with a little bit of time on their hands could, could figure out what I just mentioned in my time.
My point, my point is simply, we don't need to delve deep into how you do it. We can find out how it's done. I think it would also be good for us to invite some of the local rental companies to come to join one of these meetings and chime in.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep, and, and then, yeah, so, so I think we're getting to the point where we're like, we've, we've run an hour and a half and a little longer. Uh, Anita, I definitely don't want to cut you off, um, but I do want to just alert the board that I'm getting ready to wrap this meeting. Okay, go ahead, Anita.
Okay, um, I think it would be very helpful to interview, um, maybe the quarter, code enforcement officer or whomever in each of the three towns that we're looking at here and ask how their program is working, what's, what works well, what doesn't work well, what they might change if they, if it were easy to change, um, and just basically get their suggestions for us.
I think that's a good suggestion. Um, are you volunteering to do that?
No. No, I've got, I've got too mu, I've got to get my house ready to rent it out for a year.
Long-term.
One week at a time, one week at a time.
No.
Three days at a time.
Full year, we, we didn't even have to, I mean, they found out about it through word of mouth. We didn't whisper anything to anybody practically and we had renters.
Yeah.
That's how challenging it is for them.
Yeah, it is tough out there. Um, anybody else want to say anything, you know, to close?
Do you want us to, to work on particular questions that, remember we talked about some of the, um, variables that we might consider, uh, do you want to think about particular questions?
I have some, some sort of, um, I, I wanted to get to this one first, the, the, what I, as I called it before, the low-hanging fruit. Because I wanted to see if the board was sort of in agreement and I, I like, I like to hear that we are generally um, in favor of putting a, a pretty restricted cap on investment property unhosed and short-term rentals. I think that's what I'm going to call them. Um, I think that's a good term that, that, that plays pretty well. Investment property unhosed and short-term rentals. And so, uh, if we, if we're willing to discuss a cap, the number is up for grabs. Uh, forty-two is out there is, is my favorite. Um, but I really do think that it has, um, it has a ring to it as far as the six weeks because it's a little more than a month, but it's not the whole summer. Um, and I think that's actually kind of a, from a rational standpoint, it, it has a real basis um, in, in sort of, you know, uh, effect, effectuating our goal. Um, if somebody wants to rent a property for ten months out of the year and then put it into the short-term market for two months and they can work that, then, then more power to them. Um, so questions that come out of that is, um, if we, if we're sort of in agreement on that, which I feel that we are, um, then there's all the other stuff, you know, there's all the other stuff, but this is the biggest hit, right? This is the one that's going to make the most impact. Um, do we want to regulate short-term rentals? Yes, I think we do want to make sure that they're registered and that they're inspected. I think that's the safety issue and it's also a, uh, funding the whole enforcement issue, you know, so we have to have that component. Um, uh, I think we're all fairly much in agreement on the seasonal, you know, non-winterized camps, um, would be exempt. Um, do we talk about, um, those, those properties on Bayview Street that have long been in, um, some sort of a short-term rental bus, vacation rental business by companies that exist here in town that have been here for a long time? Um, that's a question I, I, I have grappled with and, and I don't have an easy answer to. Um, if it's true that they rent short-term only for three months during the summer and then tend to do longer-term leases like six months or seven months, that would be fine with me, but if they're really just a short-term rental business, I don't know that they deserve an exemption from the short-term rental ordinance, if that makes sense. That's a question I think we should be thinking about. Go ahead, Pat.
No, I was just saying, I wouldn't think you would want to make an exception, I think it should be across the board. You know, one other thought keeps coming back though, which I guess we're not trying to solve all of this in one night, but when you think of really having more available year-round rentals out there, I guess I'm feeling like this is still kind of falling short of allowing more of those properties because you hear more and more about people, like just somebody in my neighborhood had to move back to New Jersey because her house was, her landlord was taking over her house that she was renting and she couldn't get a rental property around here.
Right, and so.
So I'm concerned that we're not, you know, that is still something we're not capturing.
Yeah, and I hear that, I do. I, 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 my gut on this is telling me that if a person buys a house and they buy it with the intention of putting it in the short-term rental market and then they do their due diligence and they realize, oh, I can only do it for forty-two days out of the year, they're either not going to buy that property as an investment or they're going to decide that it is actually going to make more sense because not many people are looking for ten-month leases. They put it, make more sense to put it into the long-term rental market. That's, that's really what I think the, the, the impact of, of what we're doing is, even if it allows these forty-two days out of the year, I am hopeful that it doesn't prod people to say, well, you know, I buy this house, I rent it for forty-two days out of the year, that pays my homeowner's insurance and my taxes. I rent it for forty-two days out of the year, that pays my homeowner's insurance and my taxes, and I consider it an investment. That just basically the, the, I mean, lately, it's been a great investment. The equity in the house is, you know, the, the housing price is way declined. But generally, the housing market is pretty stable and it's a good investment, but it's not a get-rich-quick scheme, right? You invest in property for the long term and over the course of years, you see some return on that if you decide to sell. So I'm thinking that, you know, I don't think a lot of people are out there buying houses just to sit on them, is my point, right? Just to cover their costs.
Yeah, but they can get stuck. That's what Pat's talking about. They can get stuck.
What does that mean?
Something, something happens in their life that, that means they can't come, move up here as soon as they had hoped to or whatever.
Well, they can put it into long-term rental.
I agree about that.
I mean, even, even a month-to-month lease technically, you know, is going to qualify as a long-term rental. There's plenty of those around. So we're not, we're not banning those. You want to rent a month-to-month to one person. If you want to rent thirty days every month to a different person, I think we have to question that.
Yeah, okay. Um, I, I want to just throw out there, I don't know how well it applies right now, but I have heard from um, an owner of a, of a number of rental units that who wants to have a long-term rental when you have a situation like COVID where they're not allowed to evict and the renters don't have to pay rent for two years.
Yeah, I think this is overblown.
There's a lot of bitterness and resentment about that. They'd much rather rent short-term and get their money than rent long-term and not get anything.
Yeah, I think this is overblown. I, I honestly don't know where, where the law stands on this right now. I think that was a temporary relief. I think they suspended that. I said, I don't think it's still an active issue. Now, could it come back if COVID, you know, with COVID resurging, it's possible. Um, but you're not going to get me getting too sympathetic to landlords who are complaining about not collecting rent from people who are affected by COVID. Um, they, they, they will, uh, eventually get it, whether it's the government that has to pay it. They're, they're, they're not, they're not relieving these people of responsibility whatsoever, and if they are, the government is subsidizing that. These landlords may have to wait, and I, I understand that it's particularly landlords in a particular spot. Um, people who, you know, whatever, who may not, who may have only one or two properties, who don't have a huge, you know, safety net, I hear that, and I, I'm definitely sympathetic to that. But I don't hear the sad song of like, you know, tenants not being able to be evicted because they can't make their rent during COVID. Um, that's not gonna, that's not gonna play well with me.
And, and Ethan took to your earlier point, there's, there is very strong, certainly anecdotally, but elsewhere, evidence of people starting to go back, especially post-COVID, people starting to go back to the long-term or longer-term rental.
Yeah.
The work that's entailed in short-term, especially because, partly because COVID, you had to clean, like, the cleaning costs of renting things short-term in COVID was astronomical and it's huge. And, you know, so there are a lot of landlords who are starting to go back because they're like, man, give me a two-year lease and I'll be good.
Yeah, I, I hear you on that. So I'm, I'm trying somewhat unsuccessfully due to my own um, blabbering, uh, to close this one out. Um, but Anita was asking for some things, or Pat was asking, I think, for things we should be thinking about. I think we've touched on some of those. Um, so I think those, you know, those, those issues around what we do with all of the rest um, is, is an open discussion still. We haven't settled on anything. Um, so I think the, the, I think the, the, what I was trying to do was take the the one swing that does the most damage to what we think the biggest problem is, and I think we've kind of gotten there. And we have, we haven't, you know, ironed out the fine details of it, but I do feel like that's a very important discussion and, and decision. And, um, I'm, I'm glad that we seem to be on the same page. Go ahead, Anita.
Is there any, just for something to us to think about going forward? Uh, we've got the, we've got the sticks figured out. Is there any kind of carrot that we can throw out there for long-term renters, owners who long-term rent? I don't even know what that would be, but I wanted to just throw that out there to think.
Well, one carrot is you don't have to go through the inspection application process, right? You don't have to pay two hundred and fifty or five hundred dollars just to put it in the market. That's one. Um, the other carrot is you don't have to deal with the day-to-day management of the property as far as, you know, dealing with new, new people coming in every week, the cleaning, the, the, um, you know, whatever. Um, and the, the sort of, I think the, I would say, suggest that the, the tenant hosted, uh, short-term rentals, uh, people have a higher expectation of, of services than, than a long-term renter would. So they would, they would expect that, like, if, if a light bulb doesn't work, then you come and fix it right now. Not that, you know, like, whereas a renter, a long-term renter would fix their own light bulb, um, you know, things like that. So, um, I, you know, I think, I'm open to discussion and, and certainly let's table that and bring it to the next meeting, whether we think there are carrots that we can offer, because I, I would be, I would love to hear it. Um, I'm certainly interested in that idea. Go ahead, Chris.
I was just saying, I mean, there are some real carrots, but they're not really from necessarily our ordinance perspective. It would come more from select board and the town. There are programs that, you know, if you commit to doing rent below, a certain percentage below market rate, you get some tax rebate or things like that, that, that isn't full-on, you know, qualified low-income housing. It's just saying, you're willing to, you're willing to set your rent a little bit lower for long-term, and in return, you get a property tax rebate or discount. There's some things like that.
Where's that? Where, where is that? How does one find it?
I mean, I, I can't remember which communities I've seen have done that, but larger cities like San, I think even San Francisco and some other cities like that have talked about it, but that comes more from, that's, that's select board level rather than ordinance, what we can do. We, we, we.
And San Francisco, the beacon, the beacon of affordable housing.
Oh, but that's the point.
No, I hear you. I hear you.
Believe me, I know. I live there. But that's the point.
I also moved away.
The carrots, the carrots come more from, you know, ordinances and rules is what we do, so we're more in the stick game than the carrot game, I think.
Yeah, and I hear you, and I think that's absolutely right, that, that, that we, as a planning board, certainly could say, we review some of these things and recommend to the select board that they
Right, they could make, yeah.
Carrots, right? But it would might be more of a select board issue on that, on that end, because I don't know how we can build into, we, I don't think we're allowed to build into the zoning code of tax break. Um, that would be something.
Or rent guidance, like, that's not our.
Yeah, yeah, we're really just ordinance-focused. Go ahead, Pat. I see your hand kind of up. Was I wrong, Pat, that you wanted to say something?
Uh, no, no, I was just looking at my notes.
Okay, I thought I saw your hand raised. Okay, so are we good with, uh, adjourning this meeting? Jeremy's yawning. Um, yes, I saw that. Uh, I've got dinner waiting, and, um, so let's go ahead and, uh, adjourn for today. Um, I think this was a very fruitful discussion, and, um, we can also, remember, we can continue to communicate, uh, as long as the entire board is copied uh, via email, and I would suggest looping in Mark Rattner and Jeremy and Jeannie, um, as we usually do. But, um, just if we want to have further discussion about like, hey, I look, I saw this article, or hey, look, here's an idea on a carrot. Um, those things can all happen via email and we can be thinking about this all the time. Sounds like Jeremy does not have anything on the schedule for us for the next couple of meetings, so we can continue to hammer this nail. Um, I, I do want to, I think next time what I probably will do is, um, we'll start with the assumption that we've already sort of made without getting too fine on the details, and then move down the list of other aspects of the ordinance that are, um, a little bit more nuanced or, um, may, may, may be a little bit less, um, triggered, and we'll see how those go, okay?
Oh, yeah, just a question, um, Ethan, so are we looking, or is this still to be decided, really? Are we looking at having other types of permitted short-term rentals in addition to what we've been talking about today?
Well, right, so we've been focused on the, what I'm calling the investment unhosed, you know, unhosed.
Right.
Um, absolutely. I still think there's room for safety regulation and registration of hosted. And, um, you know, and so, um, say you have a, uh, uh, an accessory dwelling unit on your property. Um, I think that should definitely fall in under, um, you know, uh, some sort of regulation and, and inspection and safety and all that stuff. Whether we want to limit the number of days that can be rented short-term, that's still open.
For other types of permitted short, yeah, you mean for other types of permitted short-term rentals.
Yeah, because I think, because we still want to cover all of that. There's, that's what I'm saying. You sort of, I, we've narrowed the focus on this. As, again, I refer to it as a low-hanging fruit, but we narrowed the focus on the investment unhosed. And, and then there's all of the rest. I think we would be remiss if we point, if we put, put out an ordinance that didn't address everything um, to the best of our ability. So I think we want to have an all, a, a comprehensive ordinance, and we've got very good examples of them, and so we we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I think that was sort of the most critical decision that we just made. Um, and again, it's not a formal vote, and we, we have all that work to do to get the language draft and everything else. But that's a pretty critical decision to say, investment unhosed, we're going to cap it some number similar to forty-two or, you know, forty-two. Um, and, and then, uh, the rest, so we have a lot more to do.
And we, is there a volunteer among us besides not me, um, for interviewing um, the other two towns and the success?
Yeah, see, my practice has always been whoever came up with the idea should run with it. And Anita, I think that's, you know, I mean.
I, you know, what I'd be happy to do is I make.
Does, you know, we're all, we're all working people that are busy. I don't see any retirees on the board.
Oh, wait, I'm a retiree.
Well, Pat, don't raise your hand. You already did the spreadsheet.
I could make it, I'd be willing to make a list of, um, okay, fine, I'll make the calls. Oh, what the heck.
Excellent. See? That'll teach you, that'll learn you to, to bring up good suggestions during the meeting.
Keep bringing up suggestions and keep trying to get out of it.
All right. Well, good luck with that.
You need to look for another.
Then, um.
You need to look for someone to take my place, though, when I leave.
Yeah. Yeah, we got, we got a few vacancies going in, so that will be my final note. Um, we really do need to, uh, be thinking about recruiting for the planning board. Um, I thought we did really well when we brought Pat and Andy on board. I understand that Andy, um, had a, had a difficult, you know, with his schedule, he's going to have a difficult time. I'm thrilled that Pat is here. I'm sorry to be losing Mark and his, you know, his perspective. And Anita, it sounds like you're going away for a year. Is that the case? Um, so we will be losing Anita and, um, you know, my general rule of thumb is if you leave, you have to bring someone else in. Um, so, uh.
Is this another one of your rules?
That's another one of my edicts from the, from on high. So, um, Anita, you should absolutely be recruiting, and Mark, you, I know you will be watching this back. You should also be recruiting, and, um, we all should be recruiting. Uh, there are great people in town who would actually probably jump at the chance, but don't even think about it. And, um, I do think with some of the things we're tackling with sea level rise and short-term rentals and things like that, it's actually not as dry and, and sort of, you know, just bureaucratic, as you might think. We really are in a, in a time of change, and, um, I think there is a lot of room for new voices. And so, um, obviously, Mark here is here also for the select board, and he knows a lot of people in town. I'm sure that he has some ideas of people that he could put forward. So, um, everybody should be thinking about that, and Jeannie is actually technically the best recruiter because she recruited me. So watch out, Jeannie, we expect three new recruits from you, minimum. Um, that's it for now. Thank you, everybody, really, for the, the effort and consideration you're giving to this, uh, this subject, because it is really important. And I think we are on the, on the cusp of, of like, doing something really groundbreaking for the town of Camden and for the people who live here. So I think that's great.
Thank you, Ethan. You do a great job chairing.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, everybody. Take care.